For you in the future.
I just want to let you know, David, excuse me, the live stream is is having a little bit of difficulty. I'm still working on it. Just.
Who's that?
The live stream is apparently a little unstable.
Then may I make a comment? May the fourth be with you.
Be with you.
Well, tomorrow you can say go to my own day.
That's right.
Star Wars Day today. See good to mine tomorrow.
So the chairman's report, the first thing I would like to do is just a motion that we move to appoint Derek Davis as interim township manager effective May twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. And upon Rick Smith's retirement on June sixteenth, twenty twenty one, Derek shall take on the role of township manager, township secretary, right to know officer, and assistant zoning officer, and any other positions previously occupied by Rick Smith.
Moved.
I second the motion.
I just want to thank all of the candidates. We got a great group of candidates that applied for for the township manager job. We have some plans for a ticker tape parade fireworks and, you know, a a pyre for Rick when he leaves on on June sixteenth. We're sorry to see him go. There'll be more to be said about that in the future. After his illustrious fifty two year career with the township, but we're pleased and excited about having Derek come on board. He's currently assistant township manager in West Ocean Township. He knows our township. He knows our people. He's a known entity. Bright young man, and we look forward to having him on board. So any questions or comments from the board?
Well, you said it all very eloquently.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public?
Mr. Chair, if I can just take an opportunity real quick, and then I will shut up the rest of the night.
Not unless you smile first, Derek. There you go.
I I I sincerely appreciate the the opportunity by the board. I I have some big shoes to fill. Rick's had, as you said, an illustrious fifty two year career. He's done a great job. I see some some staff here. I'm looking forward to getting in there, working with the staff right away, really excited about it. But obviously has some big shoes to fill, and I'm going to work very hard every day to 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 make sure East Ocean stays a really a wonderful place to 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 live, work, and play. So so thank you, and and I'm looking forward to really excited to get to get going. So thank you.
Thanks, Derek. Hey, Derek, we failed to include something in the when we sent out the job description and the requirements. So I apologize, but I tell you now, you are required to grow a goatee.
I don't. I don't think mine will be quite as impressive, but I will do my best.
Don't worry about that one. I'm still working on it. Don't worry about.
It'll take years to get there.
You'll get it, Jason. Wait till you graduate from high school.
I'm gonna call the question with that. So all those in favor, I. Pose no. Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you.
Congratulations, Derek.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody.
The board met in executive session prior to this meeting to discuss pending legal matter concerning the Flynn Safety Seven versus Sunoco matter. That's before the PUC and with and also with the township solicitor to discuss a legal matter concerning palely bike trail easements. Dr. Sisowski's report on the subsidence on four ten North Chester Road has been received and a summary by the pipeline task force has been posted on the website. We'll take action, further action on something on that later on in the meeting. So I'm gonna just announce that that's now available and posted. The notice to proceed for segment A of the Paley Pike Trail has been issued, and the work is expected to commence sometime at the end of May. That segment A mark is from reservoir road.
David is from Airport Road to Ellis Lane.
I'm sorry, airport to Ellis. All right. So that's we got the the approval and we're ready to go. Okay, we have a public hearing tonight. So Kristen Camp is with us and Kara is ready to take notes. So Kristen, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over. The first is to consider an ordinance to amend the East Ocean Code, Chapter eighty three, titled Animals, Section eighty three point one one, to require owners of animals to reimburse the township fees and the township that the township occurs in responding to animal complaints, seizure, and detention of animals. We incur those expenses. There's no ordinance allows us to recoup those expenses from the animals' owners who are the responsible parties, so that will take care of that. And the second is to consider an ordinance to amend the East Ocean Township Code, Chapter one sixty nine, titled Peddling and Soliciting. I believe this comes about because the ordinance requires them to bring two passport photos. We now have a machine that takes the photos so that the the permits will look consistent from each of the solicitors who are traveling around our township, and we kind of have lumped those into a single resolution. So Kristen, you want to take it from there?
Sure. So this only required one advertisement seven days prior because it's not a zoning subdivision. So we did advertise tonight's hearing to adopt two different changes to your code as you've outlined, Chapter eighty three, which is animals, and Chapter one sixty nine, peddling and soliciting. The ad appeared in the Daily Local News on April twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. We also sent a copy of the ordinance to the Law Library and the Daily Local for public inspection. Two simple changes. The one was just to you do already have in your animal chapter, which is Chapter eighty three, you do have the right to reimburse expenses for for animals that are detained. But we we added to that to the extent that you incur expenses just by nature of having the SPCA or your dog control come to the township and respond to a complaint. Even if the dog is not seized or the animal is not seized by the SPCA, you would still you're still incurring expenses for them to even just respond to a complaint. So we've just broadened the language of Section eighty three dash eleven so that in the instance where a property a pet owner, excuse me, receives a citation for violation of any of the the laws relating to the animals, and they are found guilty by the Magisterial District Court, in that instance, you would be also able to then recoup any expenses that the SPCA sends to the township to say, well, we had to respond to a complaint in your township. So that's the one change. And then the second change is really, again, just the peddling and soliciting chapter, Chapter one sixty nine, Section one sixty nine dash two specifies what an applicant has to submit. They previously had to submit or before this ordinance would have to submit two, two by three inch photographs of the applicant. But because the township now has this ID bill ID maker, the township will take photographs for the peddling and soliciting license. So we're removing that one particular section from the code.
Any questions from the board?
I have one question, and it's regarding the animal concern. If there's a dog bite or other animal domesticated animal bite fine that's issued through the SPCA or I don't know who I don't know who issues those fines. But if there's a dog bite situation and the owner is found it's found that the dog or other animal owner is found guilty of this dog bite situation, is that a cost we can incur?
What happened is that fine goes to district court, and I believe that fine is then paid back. I mean, it's divvied up. Some of the cost goes to the district court. Some probably goes to the state AOPC court system, but some amount does get sent back to the.
So that it's all inclusive of that as well. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you. I have no other questions about either of those ordinances.
Great. Any questions from the public on the changes of the ordinances?
I'd just like to remind the public, if you want to ask a question, please hit star nine to raise your hand, and I see Christina has raised her hand.
Hi, Kristen. I have a quick question. Does that citation also apply if a resident's dog or other animal got loose and then they got picked up by the SPCA? Do they do they usually issue a citation or does this only apply if a citation is issued because, like Michelle said, a bite has occurred or something like that? It just isn't clear to me from reading that paragraph.
Yeah, I don't think that the SPCA, if a dog gets loose, I don't think the SPCA typically issues a citation for that. I think it depends on the circumstances. It is it is illegal to have a dog running at large, but if it was something the dog got out, you know, on its own without any fault on the property owner or pet owner, I don't believe that they issue citations for that.
No citations, Kristen, but this this ordinance amendment further captures monthly, the SPCA sends invoices to the township that varying amounts, and they're they're typically ascribed to when known, when we know the resident or the party has been identified that we can then now under this ordinance, we can bill or invoice that resident, that owner, for the amount incurred that the SPCA bills to the township. So that's one of the keys that I think is a responsible action on the part of the board to collect those fees from a property, the dog owner or pet owner that has, you know, had one of these situations that the township as a whole should not be paying or have to pay those fees. That captures those those in this ordinance, correct, Kristen?
Yeah, your ordinance already today, if the situation was that an animal is running at large and the SPCA collects the animal and brings them back to the facility and detains them, the SPCA does in fact charge the township based on your contract. The current ordinance already allows you to recoup recoup those fees. What the ordinance does is it adds to a circumstance where an animal is not detained and not taken into custody by the SPCA, but a citation is issued as a result of either a dog bite, aggressive behavior, something else. In those instances, that you are now going to also be able to recoup the fees for the SPCA to even have to respond to the incident and to call and to come into the township and and deal with the situation.
Okay, that's good. That's that's.
Wanted to know. Yeah.
Thanks, Christina. I need a motion.
I I will make a motion that we accept the amendments to the ordinances as are stated for the animal.
Chapter eighty three.
Chapter eighty three of the East Ocean Code titled Animals to be amended at Section eighty eighty three dash seven as it is stated in the documents. And can we make a motion to also, since we did all of one?
Yeah.
Also make the motion include the ordinance amending.
Chapter one sixty nine.
Thank you. I don't have that paper in front of me.
Nine dash two.
Thank you.
Hey, second, anyone second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, John one. I've already asked. I've already asked for comments, and I've already asked for public comments, so I'm gonna call the question. All is in favor, I.
I.
Pose no. Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you. We have no emergency service reports tonight.
Thank you, Kara.
Hi, Kristen.
Bye, guys.
Bye, Kara.
You too.
Kara.
Fifteen minutes. Good, good.
We are at the approval of minutes. Has everyone read the minutes for the meeting of Tuesday, April twentieth, twenty twenty one? And does anybody have any changes to the draft minute?
I don't.
And no comments.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the the minutes on a call for public comment. Any public comment on the minutes of Tuesday, April twentieth? Christina?
I have the smallest one. On page four, line thirteen, I think, where it said Russ Frank said that the solicitors should have township issued ID. I just think ID should be capitalized. ID instead of.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can make that change. Thank you. All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented with the edit that was just suggested by Christina. Call the question. All is in favor, I.
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 Pose no. Motion carries, I think, five, nothing, if I heard it, if I heard that correctly. The treasurer's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Your name's at the top of the page this time, so.
Yes, sir, it is.
And this will be the inaugural presentation of the of the Finance Committee or the Treasury Report. Go ahead.
Yes, I I think I'm fortunate. These are basically run of the mill income expenditures, which look in line with our regular seasonal monthly receipts and expenditures we expected. There's a little variation. I'd like to reiterate, as Chris mentioned last meeting, that this is just a two week snapshot. So we don't have a full year to date or versus budget to elucidate some of the differences, but we still are in the positive overall. And I just wanted to point out that twenty four thousand dollars, the final principal payment of our two thousand spray irrigation loan is finally paid, so that is done. Yeah, got one off the board.
There you go.
And we've also got.
That's all.
That's a good start, Mr. Director.
Yeah, I'll take all the credit. I'll take all the credit for that.
There you go. All two point seven million dollars worth.
And then we've also got some Hershey's deal, ma'am, Hershey's Mill Dam site development expenses from the Cap Reserve Fund. Fifteen thousand, five hundred nineteen dollars. I have some other information on various expenses, but if anybody wants that, they can ask me. I'll be happy to elaborate.
Okay. Should we someone make a motion, and we can have discussion about the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I I move that we graciously accept treasurer's report as presented and summarized.
And the expenditure register bills. Okay.
Second.
Comments from anybody? Michelle, second that.
Yeah.
Comments from the board, questions about the expense registers, the bills?
I had actually questioned. We have. We do have something coming up later on. We're gonna be replacing the phone system potentially. And I'm curious why batch one of three page two vendor number twenty six seventy five is Candlestick Communications for eighty five dollars. There's an extension there for Gary Alt House with voicemail, and I'm just confused why we're phone extension when he's hours a week or less, and why aren't his calls just going through the administrative assistant? We're getting ready to to make a change here. I it just seems like it was an unnecessary expense at this late stage of the game.
Yeah, Gary is still is still helping us part time during the commercial plan review.
Right.
So he has to call people back. So we originally, we had to get him an extension so that he could get voicemail and get messages back and forth.
I I would have liked to have seen that expenditure just wait until we switched over this phone system.
Yes, but the problem is Gary's working now.
Okay.
And so the phone system, again, we weren't sure where we were going to get it, when it's going to come in. But he's currently reviewing permits now.
Okay. Um, I Mark Miller, I have a question for you about it's batch one of three, page four. The vendor is Gempler, number nineteen fifty seven is the vendor number. How many trees for one hundred ninety nine fifty seven? How many trees were wrapped with burlap and given a watering bag? Do you know?
Ordering bag for the new trees. We're planting down at the park. About sixteen of them, and then the repair kit is something we 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 ran out, so we keep that in stock. So we stuff for damage, any bark or any trees, we coat it and then wrap it in burlap. So it's basically item to keep in stock.
Okay, great. So it it covers more than one tree. It's not just one tree. It it covers many trees.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's the last.
That's fine. Okay, great. That's all I had.
Or one really big tree.
One really, really big tree, right?
David, I think it's worth noting that the finally, the we eliminated one bond fund. If you look at, that's the irrigation bond fund that was used on the up on the golf course. We at least have gotten another one, and I noticed this last payment was twenty four thousand dollars. So it's not it's not insignificant in the cost of running the township's.
No, and I and I kind of jokingly said.
Nice for Ricky to finally see one of these little characters disappear.
Yeah, and I I was joking. I said two point seven million was actually the total amount of the debt was two eighty seven, if I'm not mistaken. But that bond fund wasn't costing us any money because Applebrook paid us paid us to 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 pay for the bond. Oh, very good. Okay, that's good. That paid for the forced main and pumps to run the water back up from the store bank to Applebrook so they could use it for irrigating the golf course. Oh, very good. Very good.
And Mike, those who played golf in their youth were responsible for that.
And if and if anyone knew where that water came from, the year gates of golf.
The same water is going to the river in the creek, David. Same water goes in the river in the creek.
I I'm kidding. All right.
I didn't have any other questions.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. Any comments from the public on the expenditures as presented? All right. I don't see any, Susan.
Look like it now, David.
I'm gonna call the question of that motion, then. All is in favor, I.
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 Pose no. Motion carries five zero. We're at new business.
Mister Ware. Good job. Good start.
Job. Under.
He needs to stay for another week.
I'm sure it's getting harder.
The first item under new business is to consider the paley pipe easement for the Cerro Holdings. This is a bit of a complex situation because the property involved here changed hands during the process a couple times, and there are different parcels, and now it's all owned by one owner. Rick, you want to kind of take us through the?
Sure. So Cerro has the big building on this northwest corner, Reservoir Road and Bailey Pike. That's thirteen fifty one. And the consideration for that easement is a total of forty six thousand, two hundred dollars. They also bought the the farm property off of Hankin. And the consideration for that easement is twenty eight thousand, four hundred dollars. Mr. Cerro was very was great. It was a pleasure to work with him. He was very detail oriented. But he's very concerned about his property. And for those of you who've been driven past the form, you can see he spent a lot of time and money cleaning that up, cutting some of the brush down and stuff like that. So there's a draft motion for the for the board to consider authorize the chairman to execute the easement agreements.
We have a can I have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and I will read this motion. I would move that the board of supervisors authorize the chair to sign paley Pike Trail easement agreements for the four parcels along segment B of the Paley Pike Trail, parcels number fifty three dash four dash one sixty eight, fifty three dash four, one sixty nine, and parcels number fifty three dash four dash one sixty six and fifty three dash four dash one sixty seven, owned by a Zero Holding LLC and authorized township staff to issue payment of consideration for the easements for the total amount of forty six thousand, two hundred dollars and twenty eight thousand, four hundred dollars respectively.
Thank you, Mike. I'll second that motion. Michelle, did you second?
I seconded it, too.
Okay, we'll we'll have Michelle second that because I'm I guess I'm the personal who would sign it if it's approved. So comments from the board?
I have none.
Comments from the public?
David, I think that the public should know that that other than what we talked about tonight with respect to Hicks property, this is the last easements that we had to get in order to complete the trail. I think it's important for everybody to know that.
Yep.
And I also make the comment that we appreciate the cooperation of the proprietors for Cerro and making the easements happen in an orderly process. So we're appreciative in that regard.
Great neighbors.
Yep.
All right, I didn't see any members of the public. I'm gonna call the question. All is in favor, I.
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 Pose no.
No.
Motion carries three to two with John and Michelle dissenting.
Correct.
Okay. The next on the agenda is to consider recommendation of the Village Square Parking Islands. And Rick, you want to go ahead and take us through that as well?
So Ed McFalls requested relief from the requirement that there be a center on an island down the middle of this parking lot. We went back and looked at the documents. Hershey's Mill was approved back in seventy eight, and under the way to municipality planning code, which is the zoning law, he's entitled is it has to be he's entitled to have it developed and built in accordance with the ordinance that was ineffective at that time. The ordinance that was ineffective at that time does not have a specific requirement about every ten spaces. So I think the board has the ability to allow Ed to eliminate those parking spaces of islands. But I also suggested to talk to him that as opposed to losing the trees, that he take that plant material and plant it around the perimeter. And there's a draft motion to that effect.
And so the the islands were the ones that were kind of in the middle of the parking lot, which frankly, I I viewed as a hindrance anyhow. I can't tell you how many people back over those things all the time and ruin their tires. But there are some islands that are being restored at the south end of the parking lot. Is that correct?
The ones closest to the store will will be put back. But the ones that run through the middle of the parking lot will be eliminated.
What about the ones up in the upper part of the of the lot? I guess that's where the you're suggesting that the landscaping would be on the south end of the lot.
Or or actually, I think it would be the west side. The idea is to put that landscaping around the perimeter, on the perimeter of the.
Yeah, the perimeter of the of the parking lot. Yeah, let's just call it that. Ed, you you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I mean, the islands, the islands to the west have stayed there. They were they were the separation between Sunoco's circulation road and what we created as a temporary circulation road. So it's just the islands down the middle. I'm happy to put them around the perimeter of the parking lot, or let's see what if you don't mind, if we see what Sunoco does at the Quaker Village site, if we if we could use trees down there instead, would that be okay? As opposed to, you know, in order to help the Quaker people as opposed to necessarily putting just around the perimeter of the parking lot of the shopping center. I'm perfectly willing to put the trees somewhere, just.
Why don't why don't we? How many trees? How many trees, Ed?
It was eight islands with eleven trees in them, and then an assortment of shrubs.
Okay.
Why? Why don't we let let township manager and the public works director and staff, maybe even the conservancy board have a of a look at that and figure it out. The fact that a Hershey's Mill Holding Company through Ed McFalls are willing to provide those plants, we'll we'll figure out what to do with them at at the appropriate time. How would that be? And we we don't have to settle this tonight where where they exactly go. Is that a reasonable way to proceed if we go forward here?
I like that idea.
Would be a motion to approve that now or?
I I would think we should would do that. I think that that would be appropriate so that.
I I I would think we should would do that. I think that that would be appropriate so that uh, the holding company knows uh, where where they're headed. And they can make their appropriate plans, and as far as the plantings go, uh, we can coordinate that uh, sooner or later. But um, knowing that it will happen, I think that that's that's the main thing. I thi- I think we should act upon it.
Can you make that in the form of a motion?
Um, I would uh, yeah, I don't know, what am I gonna say? I don't know. I would say that I would move that we grant Hershey's Mill Commercial Holdings request. Uh, with the condition that the plant material proposed to the islands be installed either along the perimeter or the parking lot. Or in other appropriate places such as possibly the Quaker um, uh, site, Quaker Village site. Um, as determined by staff and pop perhaps the Conservancy Board at a later date.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, just a quick question. When we define perimeter, are we talking of? Are any of this um, energy transfer easements involved in that? Because I know there's restrictions around plantings uh, above pipelines.
Yeah, we we're not, we can't, they have put the appropriate kind of shrubs out along the front of the shopping center. And that's all that can go out on there. Uh, the trees have to go around the perimeter, like the uh, the north side, the south side, or the uh, east side.
Okay, all right. Uh, any other questions from?
David, I got a question for either Ricky or or Ed. I was over there today, as it turned out to be my wife and they needed to go shopping so that I could have something to eat. And I appreciated that a whole lot, but in the process of doing that, I noticed that the grass coming up. You need to, somebody needs to mow the grass, and and that raised the question to me. That the grass that you had there before was a lot nicer than the grass that you have there today.
Perfect segue.
So now, that's that's problem number one. Problem number two is down at Quaker, it seems to me. That they would think that they are done, and I don't think that you think they're done, you do think they're done. And there's discussions to be had, and and I can say that with certainty, because I could weather a fair amount of time. And I'm sure Michelle goes there, wouldn't I do? But that the, there was trees and there was all kinds of stuff down there that isn't there anymore. And I don't know if it's coming back or not coming back, but it seems like to me that somebody must have taken a picture of what that looked like down there. But it certainly doesn't look like the way it was, and I know that you you and both Ed and Rick are working with Sunoco. To see if you can get another berm that's closer to the store or berm, a dull berm that's closer to the street. So it can to to suppress some, some of that noise it gives by traffic noise. So is there anything different now that we need to know than what you guys have been doing along the way?
Marty, let me interrupt. Uh, I I, as I, as I kind of said, and and I got a little smile from from Edward there. Uh, that's a perfect segue for this ancillary matter that Ed is asked about with two issues he's that he's having. With, I'll just say Sunoco, whether it's Percheron or whomever, Rick is tuned into it. Uh, you hit both of those items on the head relative to issues that Ed and the Hershey's Mill Holding Company. And and the Master Association for the Villages of Hershey's Mill is having with Sunoco. Uh, and I would uh, request the board uh, with the assistance of the staff. To uh, with whatever parties are involved, using any influence or leverage that we have as a municipality. To send a letter to the appropriate parties, uh, asking them uh, to remedy these two situations. Uh, Ed McFalls uh, rarely is uh, out of tune or or has a miscue on things of this nature. And uh, clearly, they are not understanding what is in the field versus what they are talking about via electronically or over the phone. And I think a letter from the township, and Rick would know where to send it, and or Ed uh, from the board. Supporting uh, a remedy to bring this back to uh, an appropriate uh, condition. Uh, would be something I would uh, request of of uh, my colleagues to do uh, for the uh, benefit of not just. Uh, Hershey's Mill Villages and the shopping center, um, uh, but also for the community at large.
Can I ask a question? Can we, can we bifurcate this topic, or are they related topic to the restoration of the islands?
It's a separate, some, it's really a separate uh, conversation. That's why I said it's ancillary. It it's connected, but it's it's not uh, direct.
Uh, so let's deal with the the motion that's on the table right now, and then the then let's discuss that under other businesses, because I think.
I would make a motion to that effect that it, I don't want to repeat what he did, but it was a nice motion, and I, I think it's, I think it's timely. Because I I have to tell you, if Sunoco were to do all the restoration, the same quality that they're doing down there. Or have done down there, then we're in for a lot of people coming to us to seek resolution.
David, I'm sorry, I I I didn't close that, we didn't close out the first motion, so yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's do one at a time.
Yeah, sorry about that.
The motion. The motion is for the uh, concerning the restoration of the islands and the landings around the perimeter of the of the mall. So uh, are any public comments on that motion?
No, David, doesn't seem to be.
Any other board comments on the motion that Mike presented, and Michelle second? I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No. Motion carries five nothing. Mike, let's talk about that under other business, okay? Because I'm I'm with you on that.
Okay.
The uh, next is to consider a resolution um, twenty twenty one dash one nineteen. Uh, in recognition and acknowledgement of the dedication and efforts of the Safety Seven on behalf of uh, East Ocean Township and Community. With regard to public safety uh, and their concerns, uh, been a long arduous uh, legal. Um, wrangling and uh, I I think with the, with some effect that hopefully will manifest itself as we go forward. So um, the resolution is uh, is basically an acknowledgement of the dedication efforts of that group. And we contributed uh, to that group financially to pay for expert witnesses, and so we supported that effort. So I think it's appropriate that we, that we uh, acknowledge uh, the efforts. Comments from the board?
Um, I would like to make sure we are including the three additional petitioners who were on that Safety Seven complaint. Um, they need to be recognized for their efforts without their efforts. Um, this wouldn't have gotten as much traction as it did. So I know that there's Melissa DiBardini. Uh, thank you, yes. And um, I cannot recall, I'm looking for the other two. I've got, I've got papers all over the place right this second. But there are a couple of other folks too.
Nina has her hand up, she might know.
Christina might know, actually.
Thank you. Um, I had spoken and written an email to Rick about this. Um, as you know, the complaint and as it stated in the resolution was filed in November of twenty eighteen. And then in March of twenty nineteen, Sunoco moved to consolidate not only the um, the main complaint. Which is nicknamed the Safety Seven, but also those of the three pro se complainants. Um, Melissa D. Bernardino, Rebecca Britton, and Laura Obenski. Um, they had filed complaints on their own, they represented themselves, but because the complaints were so similar. They were then consolidated, and all of the complaints um, were then uh, you know. Combined and heard on the same date, uh, in the same courtroom. And um, it, for anybody who attended these hearings to watch Rebecca or Melissa. Give testimony, um, cross-examine the expert witnesses would know that um, their complaints. Contributed just as much to the whole case as did the core seven.
Excellent. Well, I think that's great, Christina, and I think, Michelle, I'm right with you. If the rest of our, my colleagues are supportive of adding those three names to the resolution. I would make a motion that uh, we would, as as amended, adding those per se. Uh, three additional parties to the resolution of recognition for acknowledgement and acknowledgement of the dedication and efforts of the Safety Seven. Otherwise known as Resolution twenty twenty one dash one ninety nine, I would make that motion uh, with that amended uh, addition of the three members.
I'll second that motion, Mike.
Thank you, Michelle.
And perhaps maybe not call it the Safety Seven, since that's not the official name of the case. It's Megan Flynn at all.
Yeah, we have, we, that's actually, that's actually in the motion.
Yeah, we can clean that up, but I think that's great.
Yes, we put in there also known as, so it's, all right, very good. Any other uh, board comments? Any additional public comment? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
No. Motion carries five nothing. Thank you, and thank the Safety Seven for their, and the pro se. Uh, additions for their great, um, the next item is to consider recommendation to allow the recreational program activities. At the Township Building, kind of inside, outside, hybrid. Uh, Jason can kind of take us through that a little bit. Jason, before viewers.
All right, so thank you. Uh, before I begin, I just wanted to introduce a fresh face that you might see. Uh, I actually will have an intern this summer, which is going to be wonderful. Uh, Evan Tyler, who has worked summer camp for me, uh, feels like forever. And before that, he was a counselor in training, and before that, a camper himself. Uh, he's been my Easter bunny for many years, and he is a temple sport major. Uh, he is an awesome, awesome dude, very creative. Uh, and actually, now that I think about it, when I took over from Frank, he said there's three people that I want to intro- introduce you to. One was a camp director, another was Katie Harrison, who a lot of you know, and then the third was Evan Tyler and his brother and sister. So he comes a very good stock. He's gonna, I'm gonna throw him into the fire. He's gonna be attending our budget meetings. And helping me program and manage staff and all that kind of good stuff, so I'm excited to have him on board, and he's gonna learn a lot this summertime.
Great, Evan. Thanks, thanks for being on board and uh, interning. That's great.
Thank you, Rodney.
We've got a lot of work.
I'm looking forward to it.
Uh, good, good, thank you. Uh, Jason?
Sure, so in, so in terms of um, department programming, you know, as we move into the summertime. And kind of reflecting back on um, COVID transmission rates and the fact that the vaccination rates are are significant. Sign significantly going up, um, we want to to dive in and see what possibilities there were for increasing. Our indoor programming possibilities, so um, just to kind of take a step back. Different things that we looked at was, we looked, we talked, of course, with our solicitor. We surveyed the past program participants to see if they would want to come to the building again. We talked to our coordinators for the different programs, and of course, we reflected back on the new um, updated guidelines. And key for this discussion as of right now is these updates were as of April twenty seventh, which was um, about eight days or so ago. And really, the key change was that the CDC now relaxed the guideline for face masking indoors. And they said that if you were fully vaccinated, you could attend a program inside without wearing a, without wearing a mask. If you stayed still six feet apart, or you could be less than six feet and wear a mask. And for a lot of things that we do, that differentiation was very key. Uh, so for instance, our senior card club, which is sixty or seventy people, three to four times per day, you know, pre-COVID. Um, they, that was the big question was, you can't obviously play cards and be socially distanced. As much, as many times as I tried to rack my brain to think of a creative way to do it, it's not possible. So now that this guideline had changed as of April twenty seventh, now it's it's a real possibility to bring these people back into the building. And create those social networks again, and have all see people doing what they love. Um, so we looked at it in terms of a couple of different user groups, youth programming, so robotic Legos, art classes, et cetera. Um, our adult fitness, which is yoga, Zumba Pilates, the card clubs. Then of course, you know, ABC meetings, that's at some point, we're gonna want to have those be in person again. Um, and really, the only difference there is ABC meetings are adults, obviously eighteen plus. Um, with fluctuating public attendance. You know, we don't do registration for those, obviously. For the other programs, we can, so uh, it's a pretty important distinction to to think about. Uh, in terms of what the solicitor's advice was, um, I asked, are we able to offer programs exclusively for vaccinated folks? And that that was a no-go, so any activities that we do do, we can legally ask if they've been vaccinated. But we can't preclude somebody from attending the program based off of vaccination status. Um, they said that the most nuanced is the senior card club, um, that we could do indoor activities. Um, for fully vaccinated or non-vaccinated folks. Under the new guideline, which was specific to senior card club, they could be less than six feet, so they could sit at the standard table. Three feet apart, play cards, as long as they're wearing a mask. The other recommendations were that we have a registration process. So for most of our programs, fitness, youth programming, there's a formal registration process and a fee associated with it. For senior card club, it had always been passive drop-in play, no registration. So in the current environment, we would change that, and there would be a full registration program, no fees, of course. But a full registration program where the solicitor and I would work on an indemnification clause, which would augment what we currently have. Or more COVID language in there, communications about potential transmission, strongly encouraging vaccinations. And then the solicitor felt comfortable that we could carry out this new card club programs.
So basically, they agreed to comply with current guidelines and sign a whole harmless and indemnification waiver. The same kind of waiver we require other for our physical activity programs.
Yep, exactly. Uh, in terms of, in terms of what the residents uh, thoughts, comments, concerns were. Um, I asked, would you be comfortable beginning your program in the building on June first? There's about three quarters said yes. Um, would you be comfortable doing your program if you were required to wear a mask, even if you've been vaccinated? Same thing, seventy-five percent said yes, and then exclusively to senior card club members. And this was before today's announcement came out, but um, if the boardroom was still limited to nineteen people. And we could do four groups of four under that constraints, would you still want to play? And there was eighty-two percent, so. Um, so for what it's worth, you know, I think people are, they're they're ready to start doing some things again. They understand the risks. They're getting vaccinated, they're willing to do it with masks, um, but they want to, within the constraints of safety. They want to continue and start to do um, some more things inside the building if possible. Uh, in terms of coordinators, um, Charo, our lovely diminutive diminutive yoga instructor, um, is wonderful. They've been doing the online for eighteen months now, it feels like, or it's quite close to eighteen, uh, and it's been really successful. And she says for her and for her class, it's just too hard to do it with a mask, so she is gonna stay virtual until it can be a no mask inside. Um, Pam is our our Zoom instructor, and she's been teaching indoor classes for some time now. Uh, so this one, we have some flexibility. She said we could start outdoors in the parking lot. Head indoors if we want to, either on a rainy day or excessively hot or whatever, but um, that's definitely a possibility there too. And of course, Debbie Snyder and and the senior card club members are are really excited to to start up indoor program again. Uh, so then in terms of what my recommendations would be, it would be start youth programming beginning on June first. Um, that that would just be the date. I actually don't start programming until mid-June, uh, but June first as as a catch-all date. Uh, we would temp check the kids, hand wash before and after, social distance, mask and all that kind of big stuff. Uh, for fitness, we would just offer Zumba, we would sort it outside, we would assess how successful it was, and then move indoors when ready. And then for senior card club, we would start on June first. Uh, I would work with the solicitor to create some language to augment what we currently have. Uh, we would require face masks inside, there'd be advanced registration, so under social distancing guidelines. Sixteen people total in the boardroom, and then twelve people in the program room at a time. And there are more than likely be two-hour time limits for the games, so we play, you know, nine to eleven, eleven-thirty to one-thirty. Two o'clock to four o'clock and so on, and of course, my good friend Debbie Snyder from the parking machine would help me out, set all that stuff up. So what kind of questions do you all have?
I got a couple. I, I know for, in a lot of circles, the vaccination passports are not very copasthetic with a lot of people concerning freedom of rights, freedom of movement. And that is certainly evident in the pending legislation with the House, with, to House number two sixty-two and the Right to Refuse Act and the Senate with four seventy-one with the Medical Freedom Act. But I was looking at the solicitor's advice here. And the first bullet says cannot restrict activity participation based on vaccine status. But then the second bullet reads indoor activities can resume for those fully vaccinated so long as participants either wear a mask or stay six feet apart. Am I, am I just not reading comprehension there or am I missing something? It seems contradictory.
No, I, I think that's actually a typo that I had in there. It's, it's active, indoor activities can occur for vaccinated or non-vaccinated. But if you're vaccinated, you can not wear your mask if you're more than six feet or wear your mask to be less than six feet.
Okay, all right. All right. So it may was a typo and that's, that's why I was confused. The only, the only other thing I would, would comment on or within the indoor activities to do whatever assurances we can to make sure that the ventilation is, is robust as possible, whether it means open doors, open windows, a fan to move the air around. That's just one comment. And the other, I would feel more comfortable if I knew any supervisory staff associated with the activities here were vaccinated in their capacity. So those, those are my comments.
I have a, did you have something, John? Go ahead.
I was just gonna clarify, Jason, we are not requiring a vaccination card at this point. Is that right? For all of this.
And we can't.
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. They said, the solicitor said we can, we are allowed to ask if people have had vaccinations, but it can't have any impact on our decision-making or ability to interact with the township.
I have a card club, though, is you could have both vaccinations. You're still gonna have to wear a mask because you can't socially distance, so.
Right.
So a couple of questions. First of all, is there any chance that there is another room that could be utilized for card club because that is so well-attended? Is there a chance that they could go downstairs outs, outside the, the garage attached to the building? Could you put some card playing? Could you put some, some tables in that, in that open-air environment for, to allow for, you know, more people to play? The other thing is, do you have any idea when they're gonna, they're gonna be lifting the requirements for our maximum number of people in the rooms? At this point, we have restaurants at seventy-five. There's no reason why we shouldn't be also in that category.
Yeah, so to answer your first question, I could talk to Mark Miller and see. The only, me just being a hyper risk management person, my only concern would be if somebody, mobility issues, getting back there, ADA access, you know, Mark's truck's coming in. And that would just be something to take a look at.
Jason, we could use community room. Yeah, but there's nineteen in the big room. And you can put some number of people in the community room.
Yeah, we can put twelve in there.
Thirty-one people could play cards.
That's great.
That's not too bad. But to answer your second part of the question, and it actually opens this up much, much wider, is Rick sent out the email today that as of, as of Memorial Day, May thirty-first, Governor Wolf is gonna lift all COVID restrictions except for the face mask. So theoretically, by June first, which is that next day, we should be able at full capacity for the rooms if we so choose. We can still restrict, but, but as of the governor's recommendations, I'm assuming it'll go through the DOH, too, is we could have the boardroom and program room at capacity or at least much closer to capacity. And still just require the face mask. So on a, on a, on a high day, we have maybe fifty or sixty card players. You know, I'd say nine or ten o'clock on a Friday. That's half of the capacity of the boardroom. So, you know, just thinking out loud here, we could, once that formally is written up in an order by Governor Wolf's office in the next couple of days, and we see it in black and white, then we can plan for that. So on June first, we can have it at, say, fifty percent or seventy-five percent and then have all the card players there and still be, you know, in a, in a safe zone, so.
Let me say, Jason, Jason, I appreciate how much work you've put into this, first of all, and I think we all do. Secondly, on the, the question of who's responsible if somebody who played card here, cards here gets COVID. I'll be darned if I can figure out how they could prove that somebody caught it at a card game in our building rather than at the grocery store or out in the street or anywhere else. So I'm not saying don't be careful, but don't worry yourself too much about that aspect.
Yeah, still want the waiver. Because regardless of fault, we can, we can incur defense costs and things like that. Make sure we have that covered, so.
Well, I'm supportive of your recommendations on, from Mike and Jason.
Yeah, I'm supportive of it as well.
I am, too.
As presented, so I guess we can make a motion to approve limited safely reopening based on the recommendations from the Department of Parks and Recreation dated April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one.
Second, whatever.
Any other discussion?
Jason, I just have a que, oh, I'm sorry. I just have a question about the mask wearing. If you're fully vaccinated and you're with other people who are not vaccinated, you still need to wear a mask if it's more than one household, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure if I heard that right or not. Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor, aye? Oh, there's no, motion carries five, nothing. Next item on the agenda is to consider a recommendation. Thanks, Jason. Good work. Hopefully, we're moving toward normalcy here. Consider, next is to consider recommendation for long-range planning session and budget process. I've got a memo from Rick that lays out a twenty-twenty-two long-range planning. I can tell you that June eighth is not an ideal date for me. I don't know how everyone else. I can make it work if it works for everybody else.
I put in my calendar that at the moment, it was, works for me. But it's a, it's a nice layout of the roadmap, roadmap ahead. And I really appreciate seeing that. That, and that really, if we recall, that, that kind of plays off of our suggestions from last year during the budget process. And this picks up on all of that. So we really appreciate that.
I agree with Mike. David, your concern with the eighth, is that a particular day or the week is out or what?
It's kind of that week, but like I said, if it works for everybody else, I can, I can make it work. I have my family coming in from Ohio that weekend. We'll be at the beach.
Rick, Rick, is there a reason why we couldn't move it a week ahead or a week behind?
Well, the, the board's gonna have a regular meeting on the first. And you have another meeting on the fifteenth. So we were just trying to pick the odd weekend. That's why.
What's the time of this meeting and structure of the meeting?
That's what I wanted to.
It'll be a workshop, seven o'clock. Essentially, like, like you're, just like tonight.
That'd be an evening meeting, so.
It'll be evening meeting. I think the difference would be is David and people would present stuff. There would be public comment at the end, but, but it wouldn't be like public comment. You wouldn't be making a motion, public comment. All comment would take place at the end.
Right, at the end of the meeting. All right, yeah, I, I'll be at the beach, but I can sequester myself in the, away from the kids and dogs for, for the meeting on the eighth. So if it works for everybody else, I'll make it work for me as well.
Thank you, David. And I might say, just editorially, you, by that point, if you know families the way I know families, you might need a break anyway.
That thought occurred to me.
So then, can we, can we assume?
I love all of you equally.
Of course.
Can you all, can we all assume then that these, these meetings are gonna be at seven o'clock for workshops and whatnot moving forward as well?
Well, when we advertise, when we, when Susan advertised to me as beginning of the year, we advertise every Tuesday at seven o'clock, as needed.
So I'm, I'm assuming that all of the other dates will be seven.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
So a motion?
I would make a motion that we schedule a long-range planning session for Tuesday, June eighth at seven PM. And then we schedule budget workshops for the dates suggested above on this paper, all seven PM.
John, second?
Second the motion.
Okay, thank you, John. Any more comment from the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
No, motion carries five, nothing. Thank you. Next is the consideration of replacement of our phone system. Apparently, it is beginning to fail. And the current system is no longer supported by the hardware and software provider. So we got bids. Somebody needs to mute their.
It's Mike.
I just muted, um, yeah.
The, we have a we have bids from Candlestick Communications and Exacom Incorporated. And there is a motion to recommend the board award the contract to Candlestick Communications in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars. They were the low bidder. The other bid was nine thousand six hundred and five dollars. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, John. Any board comments?
Only question I have is, are we budgeted for this?
Comes out of capital reserve.
Yes and no, right?
Correct. All the money's in the capital reserve, but we didn't, and it is, it's, we weren't going to replace it. But at some point, you know, if, if we don't replace it, the things are gonna crash or be dead, dead in the woods.
Okay.
The question I have, David, is there's only two bidders. And it's difficult to tell here between the two systems. Is there, is there a significant difference between the two systems? Is one better than the other? Is there any reason that we should consider the second guy as opposed to the first guy? That kind of stuff is, because I just, I mean, I'm not a telephone guy, but I sure as hell don't know much about those systems.
Marty, that's, that's a good question. And, and the question I had was, first of all, with Candlestick Communications, are they a going concern? And if we had good, they have a good track record of servicing us to date. That's the one question, Marty. I would probably piggyback with yours. And the other is the system that we're looking to install. Is that gonna be serviceable as far as we know for the next five, seven years or maybe ten years? You know, some of these times, these systems and those that provide them can kind of come and go almost as cottage industries. And I just wanted to hear the staff's feeling about their resilience and their serviceability and how they've done.
The Candlestick has been with us since moving into township building. They come at the drop of a hat when we bump. Their service work is very reliable. The system that he's proposing is going to be a total upgrade from what we have now. And you'll be able to add, going forward, you'll be able to add different options to that phone system with no problems.
Is this a voiceover system? Or what do we refer to as voiceover IP? Is that what this system is?
That.
That's what it indicates.
Okay, I missed, I may have missed that in the.
It says hybrid voiceover IP system.
Okay, sorry, I missed that. Good, that's good. Okay, I would, I would second the motion if it wasn't already seconded.
It was seconded.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm out of sync.
All right, very good. Any other questions about the system? I'm assuming staff looked at the systems and the capabilities of systems and the expandability and flexibility of the system. So any public comment? I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor, aye? Oh, motion carries five, nothing. Thank you. Last item on new business is to consider a recommendation on issuing the refuse and recycling bids.
So David, it's.
Yeah, give us, give us background, Rick.
So we, we go out for bid. Basically, it's a, we go out for bid every five years. Essentially, it's a one-year contract. We give ourselves the right to cancel at the end of the year if we're not satisfied with the service. If we are satisfied, the vendor has the right to increase his prices by the cost of living. The biggest change we're suggesting for this year is to go to once a week yard waste. That was the one complaint or call we've had over the years. People clean up in the spring. In addition to, yeah, you know, on, on November and with the leaves. A couple of minor changes. We want to decrease the amount, the size of yard waste that people put out. We've had, had people put out essentially like firewood. You know, tie a string around it and call it a bundle. So we want to reduce that size down to something a little more manageable. We put in two inches. I mean, if we put, right now, we, I think the limit is six. You know, and so it'll take something six, but sometimes you get people put eight, ten and stuff out there. So we're saying we could add to two. We're not looking to two. We could take it to four if we wanted, if you wanted. The other suggestion we're gonna do is to put cameras on the truck, require cameras. This would eliminate, well, you didn't pick up my yard waste or you didn't pick up my trash. And this way, we could call it a hauler and he could, he could cycle back and say, well, when we went past fifteen-eleven East Strasburg Road or fifteen-eight Polly Pike, here's a picture, there was no trash out. The last piece that we just came up with and we, we talked to the, we should talk to the hauler. It's not really a moneymaker, but it's probably the right thing to do, is we take white goods, refrigerators with the Freon removed, stoves, washers, that type of stuff. We would suggest that if you want to get rid of one of those trucks, one of those items that you call the township and the vendor or hauler would then provide a separate truck, box truck, that would go out on bulk collection day and pick up the white goods. And as opposed to taking them to the landfill, they would take them to the recycling facility. It's not what you call a moneymaker, but it is all cardist stuff about going green and not putting recycled materials in the landfill. You know, the washing machine, the freezer, those types can be recycled. But, you know, most people, if you, it actually specifically haul it and pick up a separate truck. Again, it's not gonna be a moneymaker, but it is more compatible with this going green and the rest of the, you know, that, that environmental type stuff, so.
Would, would there be a fee for the resident to have?
It's all ground in. Right now, there is no fee. We pick up two bulk items once a month.
And interestingly enough, I, I saw, I heard a blog on cap and trade on Freon. There's actually a market. There's guys that go around and look for Freon containers. And, you know, you're doing a good thing by recycling the Freon. And they actually capture that, put it in big tanks and sell it. So there's, they, they get paid to take it away and then they sell it and get paid on the other end. It's an interesting issue. Get paid to take it away and then they sell it and get paid on the other end. It's an interesting uh, issue and um. So I, I have a question about the winter months with yard waste. Do, do we do that now? Do we have a?
Yes, we, we collect yard waste every other week.
Will we continue that through the winter months like uh, December, January, February?
Well, in, in January, you have Christmas trees. And not everybody takes the tree down, you know, some people keep it up longer. But again, I think it goes back to keep, the, the KISS principle, keep it simple. If people know yard waste is every, every Wednesday, they put it out. If people know that uh, yard waste is every uh, Wednesday, it's sort of like levelizes it, the load out. Um, some municipalities only do it once a month. And if there's a problem and, and you know. That's a chance, it, it creates issues. So that's why we're suggesting, keep it simple, once a month. Um, and I will talk, yeah, and then also. Reduce the size of the branches in yard waste. And uh, again, uh, the cameras and the last uh, thing is, we were going to add the uh, comment about the white goods, a separate truck.
Your base, you're saying to change it to once a week, right?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so uh, the only issue I have is really the um. The size of the branches, because we live in a mature neighborhood, many of us live in mature neighborhoods. And the size of some of the branches that are coming down are pretty big. A lot of times there are pine trees that are coming down too and. You know, what are people supposed to do with those larger logs at that point, was particularly with pine trees? So i- if it's not a cost savings and it's not harming anything, I'd rather see them. Just decline accepting those logs. And if they have a camera on the truck, it's easy to say. We, yes, you know, we were just at fourteen-thirty Grand Oak Lane and, and she put out fourteen, you know. Eight-inch logs, we're not accepting them. And then they can take a picture with the camera and verify that. I mean. I, I, I personally just don't see the need to necessarily change that. And if they're gonna have cameras, they're gonna have evidence that the logs are too big. I don't know what anybody else thinks on that, but that's my thought on that. That's the only, that's the only thing I, I'd have to say.
Rick, how about that? Do people know this rule?
Well, it's published, um, it hasn't changed for the last fifteen years. We can publicize it, um, let people know the cameras are coming. Uh, let people know, it'd be a little bit of education, pro, education. And let people know that if, if the logs are over six inches, um, that they won't take them. I mean, it's not a big deal for the, for a guy on the back of the truck to have a tape measure if there's power wood there, take a picture of it.
That's good. Alright, I need a motion to direct the staff to solicit bids.
I would uh, make, make that motion to direct staff to solicit bids for refuse and recycling services with the.
Go ahead, Mike.
Except, except for the um, change diameter.
Too slow, Mike. No, Mike's, thank you, Michelle. Alright, any other board? By the way, I thought the uh, the ultimate recycling list, what was the um, uh, source of that document?
That, that comes from uh, Biscaro, Scara, Biscaro.
Yeah.
They have a division called Total Recycle. It's up in Burrowsboro.
Yeah.
And that's where all the recycled materials that, that um, collect go.
Yeah.
So it, right now, they'll take all plastic. So depending on what it's, a polyethylene, a polypropylene, threes and fours, a lot of white plastic bags, they'll take them, but um. So we'll, we'll publicize this at the end, you know, for next year. Remember, we'll publicize it now. They'll, they'll take all that stuff now.
Yeah, that, that was helpful, this. Um, although I'm, uh, any public comment on the motion to solicit bids?
Christina has her hand up.
You're on mute, Christina.
Thank you. I love the idea of once a week, um, yard waste pickup. I'm just wondering, um, Rick, would that also be different days of the week? Whether you're north of Paley Pike or south of Paley Pike, or would it be the same day for the whole township?
Yeah, right now, the yard waste is always on Wednesday.
For everybody?
Yeah, that's like the off day.
So if you change the schedule to something more frequent, it would still be the same thing, same schedule for everybody? It wouldn't be?
Yes.
Uh, different, because I remember John Altshuler used to explain how um. You know, every year we had to alternate and switch days.
Doesn't change until two thousand twenty-three.
Every three years, every three years, township to minimize the effect of the Monday holidays.
Right, because I feel like I just get the days right and then it changes. And um, okay, so I was just wondering, thank you. I, I love it if you guys did um, weekly yard waste pickup.
And I say, let me say one thing, if I may, um, I've lived a lot of places. Uh, and I have never lived anywhere where they picked up yard waste this regularly. I really appreciate it. Um, I don't know if people know how well they have it.
Yeah, that's true. Um, uh. I'll make another comment. Uh, I think a nice goal would be, I was uh. Um, I thought the information about from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty, the average household put out.
Yeah.
Twenty-two hundred and forty-one pounds of refuse and seven hundred and fifty-six pounds of recyclables. And four hundred pounds of yard waste. I'd, uh, I'd like to see the refuse and the recyclables switch.
Exactly, my thoughts too, David. I'd love to see that happen over the next four, five years.
Two thousand pounds of recycles and seven hundred pounds of, of trash, so. Um, that's a good goal for the uh, Sustainability Advisory Committee. Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor, aye? Those no, motion carries five, nothing. Thank you. And that's the last uh. Stormwater agreement, uh, a motion for me to, uh, to authorize. Me to assign the stormwater management operation maintenance agreements for sixteen-thirty-one East Strasburg Road.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? At your house, Rick?
This is the uh, new house down across from Cornwallis Drive. The guy that had the house real close to the road and then. Um, he came back for a variance, so um, they finally getting ready to build it.
Okay, cool.
So, on Chris, across from Christina Lane, not for Wallace, but yeah.
Christine, sorry.
Yeah, they just recently came in for a variance, so.
Yeah, that's.
He's ready to get started.
Any other questions, comments? Comments from the public?
We uh, under, any other matter then, David?
Yes.
Yeah, there is. So I'm gonna, gonna call this question. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No, motion carries. Under any other matter, um. I would like to make a motion that we, the matter that we talked about earlier, that we refer guys' comments and uh. On the subsidence report to the Pipeline Task Force. Um, for the judge's decision for the Pipeline Task Force to come back to the board with recommendations about public comment. Anything that the board should make to the PUC regarding the safety seven uh. Uh, decision, the court decision. So I just want to make a motion, we refer it to the Pipeline Task Force for action.
Second.
Yep, I agree.
Alright, any comments from the board? Comments from the public?
There are none.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those no, motion carries. Any, any other, other matter?
Yeah, the, the matter that we talked about earlier with the grass and the uh, whatnot with the uh, with Sunoco.
Yeah, I just, I just want to pick up on that, that uh, I would ask um, my colleagues if, if uh, through staff. And in coordination with uh, Mr. McFalls and uh, Hershey's Mill Holding and the Master Association for the Villages of Hershey's Mill. That we could uh, send a letter under our letterhead, maybe signed by the chair. Uh, in support of the two issues that Mr. McFalls has raised regarding the type of seed. That was used and in front of the shopping center and also the matter of the uh, relation to the berm and the uh. Uh, at Quaker Village that uh, that, that we support. Uh, the remediation that he is seeking. I think he's on point. And uh, Sunoco could do better by understanding what's in the field. So I would, I would ask if we could uh, support. Putting a letter together um, to um, help um, see if we can get some uh, remedy for those two issues. Uh, behalf of the uh.
The motion, motion would be to have a staff work with um, at McFalls to draft a letter in support of the. Proper remediation of those properties.
Exactly, I could have said that in an hour if you'd given me that time, but it uh, I.
Second.
Okay, John, second.
Um, I think that we should expand it actually to allow for other properties in the township. That may need further remediation and um, allow, uh, just, just allow it to be opened up a little bit. Because I don't know that the Matlack um, folks are real happy with their um, giant. I don't know that the Ocean Corporate um, Center people are gonna be happy with having to cut the thick.
I think you're right.
One at a time.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree, Michelle, but I think that they should bring those to our attention the way Mr. McFalls had. And then we deal with them each one, I think. And I'm certainly supportive of anyone that comes forward. That feels that they need further remedy and, and our assistance to at least try and leverage the best we can.
That's fair.
Marty, Marty made that comment earlier and I think he's right. I think we, and we just, I think we do them one at a time and we, we. Much as we need to, to get our residents satisfied with the, with the remediation that's done on their easements, so.
Yeah, good.
Alright, any other comment from the board on Mike's motion to support the, uh, any public comment?
Caller with phone number ending in one eight five, you keep on muting yourself. Do you have a comment?
Oh yeah, this is our Robert Plummer. Um, I don't know if you got to my uh. Um, compliance, uh, property compliance.
We did, Mr. Plummer, and uh, we, staff will be contacting you uh, later on. Uh, but that's not a matter we're gonna be discussing publicly this evening, if I'm correct, um, Mr. Chair.
That's right. I do appreciate that. I, I had to step away from the coach truck, I apologize. Okay, thanks, thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any uh, any other uh, public comment on the motion that we're considering right now? Okay, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor, aye? Those no, motion carries. Alright, we're at public comment at eight twenty-three. So is there any additional comments from the public regarding any matter?
Thank you for your support.
Alright, seeing none, um, we'll move to uh, liaison. Of course, we have none correspondence. Um, we have two, um, just acknowledge that we uh, we sent out uh. Uh, zoning uh, hearing board letters uh, on the um, ESKI and the CTDI zoning hearing uh, issues. Um, to publish the dates of the hearings and so on for future consideration. Um, and with that, we are done.
I would make a motion to um, adjourn unless I just heard somebody say that they were trying to.
Good night.
Hi.
Good night. Okay.
Alright, I'll call the question. Call those in favor, aye?